...our research and business. We'll have it done by the end of the summer. Yeah, and then we're pitching. Well, yeah. It's totally good.
Really? Is she, where is she?
Uh, in our Better Building Commission, we've been able to create a great resource. We know how to do that. There's also a nonprofit group in Eastland, we received $100,000 in grants to do what we had wanted to do on a larger scale.
Advising them or?
No.
She's ready to go. Just waiting for my cue and then we'll go.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, June 27, 2011, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Baker, Galloway.
Here.
Lennon, Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Councilman Lennon called earlier and he has a health issue and asked to be excused. If that's acceptable to council?
I would move that we excuse Councilman Martin.
With support.
I always forget. Can we just, all in favor, can we do an all in favor? All in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Our first order of business then is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Yes, Mr. Wallenwerber.
Yes, sir. I have one item to put in the packet for the council and that is an agreement that would authorize us to sign the agreement with DTE. Ask that you put that on the consent agenda. I think we included that in the Thursday packet for everyone. And if you would do that this evening, then we can proceed with them.
All right. We'll add that as item O on the consent agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? Then a motion would be in order to approve the agenda?
I would move that we approve the agenda as amended. With support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. We have approved our agenda. We have a number of presentations this evening. I guess that's why so many of you are here. Good to see everybody. And our first presenter this evening is going to be the Ferndale Community Foundation Annual Grant Awards. Always a very exciting time of year. Dan, welcome. And Helen Weber has the oversized checks. Always a requirement of this.
Good evening. My name is Dan Martin. I'm chairperson of the Ferndale Community Foundation and this is Helen Weber, our treasurer. We're here tonight annually to recognize organizations which we have the privilege of funding for this year. Since its inception, the Ferndale Community Foundation has given over $50,000 in grants and it was founded in 2003. And that is a completely volunteer effort and due entirely to the work of the volunteers and the board who I'll introduce once we hand out the oversized and real checks. We had a number of applications this year. We had over 14, we had 14 applications with almost $20,000 in requests. We're giving away seven grants this evening for $7,000. And we'll start by recognizing the Fern Care Free Clinic, Inc. We'll have folks come up. We'll give them the money if you want to hold your applause and we'll get a picture with everybody as we come up. We put an emphasis this year on grants that recognize ongoing capacity for organizations and Fern Care's grant request was for building long-term relationships with area corporations in order to ensure ongoing revenue support for the clinic. The second awardee this year is the first time this organization has received money from us and that is the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Committee. The project of the Environmental Sustainability Committee this year is to support the Tuesday evening lectures, which is a great educational opportunity in our community. Next, we have the Fine Arts Posters and specifically the Orchestra Program. Is someone from the organization here? All right, they're going to send someone. We'll make sure they get their money. But that grant request was to repair instruments in the middle schools and elementary schools to help provide instruments to students as their program continues to increase and grow. Next, we have a grant to the Ferndale Recreation Department, which is in support of the establishment of a farm on Garbit, Indian Garbit Park, that'll help support the Ferndale Farm Stand long-term. Next, we have Ferndale Youth Assistance. Someone here from Ferndale Youth Assistance? Oh, the Chair of the Youth Assistance is right here as well. I didn't know we were double dipping. I'm not sure what that's all about, but um... The grant, the grant award for Ferndale Youth Assistance this year is a series of lectures and programs actually aimed at parents to help them with issues relating to bullying and assorted other issues that are providing support for. Next, we have Michigan AIDS Coalition. I know Monica's here. Michigan AIDS Coalition is a nonprofit located in Ferndale and their grant request was for grant writing to broaden the scope of their mission beyond HIV and AIDS into hepatitis And lastly, we have Oakland Livingston Human Services Agency and I believe Mayor Coulter is going to accept the award on their behalf. And this is a program where we are funding the purchase of backpacks that will be farmed out to area organizations to be filled with school supplies and be given to Head Start students to make sure they get the right start in their educational experience. So, congratulations. So, round of applause for all these great organizations. Lastly, I have one overdue check. You'll recall, as one of our fundraising activities, perhaps, if you were there, you'll recall it, we had a roast for Jeannie Davis and she was a terrific sport. And as part of that, we are splitting the proceeds from that evening. We didn't make a lot of money, but we made enough that we wanted to share it with the Ferndale Senior Group, so I have a check for them for Jeannie's graciousness and bearing all the, well, it was probably a rough evening, but...
She's up there, let's do it again.
Applause for making the stage. That's right. The roast is over, I'm sorry. Lastly, I want to recognize the board members. This is really a volunteer organization in its entirety. And not only we have great volunteers that come support us, but we have a board of directors that gets together every month, frequently more often, to look at grants, to raise money, to build marketing materials. So I want to recognize the board. Our Vice Chair, Greg Palica. You met. Our Treasurer, Helen Weber. Our Secretary, who still continues to serve, Jeannie Davis. Councilwoman Melanie Piana is here and serves on our board. Our County Commissioner, Craig Covey. Judy Palmer, I know Judy's here. Where is she? And Mr. Matt Nowaczek is here, who's joined our board. Not here this evening, but I want to recognize is Kim Beebe Mindy Couples and George Chap as well, who serves on our board. Oh, and Julie Music. I'm so sorry, Julie Music's here. Holy cow. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Certainly, one of the things that makes Ferndale special is the number of volunteers and people who are working in our community and that is just a tremendous reflection of it. Dan and to your group, thank you so much. Our next presentation this evening is from our friends at SEMCOG. They're going to talk about their ride share program and maybe a couple of other things as well. Susan Stefanski and also Susan Rowe is here with us, right? And Susan, I understand you're an elected official in the city of Wayne. Welcome. You can tell us how we compare to how you run meetings down in the city of Wayne. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Susan Stefanski and I'm a planner with the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, also known as SEMCOG. This spring and summer, SEMCOG is in the process of trying to visit with our members, typically city councils, to remind them or inform them about some of our educational programs at SEMCOG. Educational outreach is just one component of what we do as the regional planning agency here in Southeast Michigan. So today, I'm going to just give you some highlights of the programs and let you know that we have various materials for these three public outreach programs. We have tip cards, public service announcements, videos, posters, and everything is digital on our website, so I just wanted to let you know before I start. Michigan Ride Share is the first program I'd like to talk about and it's a voluntary program that allows people to carpool and vanpool. This program has been around since 1980. It's been very successful. Currently, we have about 5,500 people in the region that are actually utilizing this service. It saves money, it helps protect our air quality, and it's really easy to join the program. We haven't had any safety issues over the years reported, not one, since 1980. It's easy to register. You're guaranteed a ride home should something happen, like your partner cannot drive you home, they have a family emergency or something like that. So I have tip cards that I provided for you that you can put in your libraries, municipal buildings. The next program I'd like to talk about is our Water Quality Protection Program called Ours to Protect. It's the Seven Simple Steps to Clean Water. And this program is geared towards informing people about where their storm drains actually drain to, which is our lakes, rivers, and streams, and how all of us on a daily basis can take steps, just in our daily lives, to help prevent pollution prevention. So our tips include keeping pollution out of storm drains, fertilizing careingly and sparingly, carefully storing and disposing household cleaners, chemicals, and oil, cleaning up after your pet waste, practicing good car care, using earth-friendly landscaping, and ways in which you can save water. So again, we have materials on that campaign. And finally, we have a very, very old program called Ozone Action and we welcome you to link to this page on our website. We can offer communities alerts for those days. Prior to an ozone action day, we actually declare those days with the local and regional meteorologists in the area. So that's a outstanding program. Many of you have maybe seen ozone action days on the freeway signs digitally and that's just one way of telling folks, hey, you know, don't mow your lawn at the peak sunny time of the day. It's better when the temperatures are cooler because you won't be creating as much ozone. Another tip is simply not mowing your lawn that day and waiting for a cooler day because those fumes can add to the ozone layer. That's really all I wanted to talk about today and let you know that we welcome you to put the materials in your municipal offices. Please contact us if you would like free materials and we look forward to working with you in the future. We're always welcoming you to attend different meetings, a planning commission meeting to talk about these materials as well. So I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Any questions of council? Yeah, Kate?
Yeah, definitely a question. It's funny, you just saw the Chair of our Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission come up and accept a check and we have a very active environmental community here in Ferndale. And I wonder if any of those videos that you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation, I wonder, are they available for us to put on our local cable channel?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up because we are willing to let, I mean, obviously you can use the PSAs for your local cable station and run those at whatever time you see fit. And again, that would be the Seven Simple Steps. They're very nice, clearly stated messages in those public service announcements, so I can get those for you, definitely.
Fantastic. Our city clerk would probably be able to get it to the right person.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Our next presentation, Chris Hughes, I believe, is here to present on behalf of the DDA. Good evening, Chris.
Sure. Okay. Hello, Chris Hughes, Communications and Marketing Manager, Mayor, City Council, everybody watching at home. I'm representing the downtown Ferndale and we have lots going on and have had a lot going on in the last month. If you've been around town at all, you know that. We just had Pimp Your Pot, which was great. We had lots of color on the street and still do. Modern Natural Baby was the winner with a very cute little flower-filled buggy. All kinds of good stuff, but as we move ahead here, we want to make sure that all of our businesses know and anybody else that's thinking about opening a business to join us on Wednesday, June 29th, in the morning at 9:00 a.m. at Michago Pizza. Michago Pizza. We'll be talking about, in any event, how to make those special promotions that we have in town that we hope that you will all be approving. And a little bit on your consent agenda, how to make those work for your business. And we've got lots of them going on all summer long. So it's at 9:00 a.m. It's open to anybody. In particular, we like to have our businesses come. It's an opportunity to meet your business neighbor and share ideas about how you do business and how to do it better. But everybody's welcome at Michago Pizza, 255 West Nine Mile Road. Probably the most important thing that I can talk about tonight, if I can get one person to come as a result of seeing this, and if they bring two friends and everybody else brings two friends, you have a date with destiny and you are invited to join us on Wednesday, June 29th, in the evening, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Valentine Distilling Company, otherwise known as Valentine Vodka, at 161 Vester. We're just using, they have some great space in the back. And we are going to get back to the future. We're going to be talking about what's going to be, how downtown Ferndale is going to take shape over the last, over the next 10, 20, 30 years. And we welcome public input. Everybody, come and have their say. It's your downtown. What you have to say is very important to what kinds of plans are built. Remember, today was the future 10 years ago. So it's very important that everybody come on out. It's totally free. We will serve light refreshments if we have to to get you there. But we would like everybody to come and share in the fun of knowing where we've been and envisioning where we're going to go in the next, in the future. And it's very critical, we're preparing for the, our new TIF plan and all kinds of questions will be asked and answered at that session, so we hope you can all come out. Next up in downtown Ferndale, as things move along, is July 15 through 17th, we have a brand new, it's, well, there was a little bit of it at last year's art show, but this year, it's a brand new event, the Live Green Fair. And there'll be all kinds of things going on at this fair that are important to many members of our community, in fact, most of them, all about connecting green users with green providers. There's going to be the Green Home, Green Music, let me think, let me get my list here of all the things. They've got a free veggie taste fair, green art selection, holistic enlightenment section, and as I said, the Green Home Show. There will also be, in conjunction with this, at affirmations, they will be hosting a test drive of GM products. So if you've been dying to get behind the wheel of a Volt, they will have one there that you can give a ride. And they have special drivers, so you can't drive away with it, but you can give it a good shot. The same week after that, in downtown Ferndale, we have one of our favorite events, Fido Does Ferndale, and that's on July 21st, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. As you can see, we've got lots of sponsors. We're going to have lots of vendors down there. It's just a great day for dogs and their owners. And we invite everybody. We have a canine treasure hunt and even if you don't have a dog, it's a fun day to come downtown. And I just threw this slide in because I like all the things you get to see when you come down there and people dressing their dogs up and all kinds of stuff. So my dog wouldn't put up with it, but anyway, it's a great, it's a great day in downtown Ferndale. And that's about it. If you are confused about anything I've said, just visit downtownferndale.com. We've got all the details all the time right there or visit us on Downtown Ferndale on Facebook. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Come Wednesday night.
Wednesday night.
Thank you.
That's the key message. Any questions of council or staff? Thanks, Chris. Got a lot of good stuff going on.
Sure do. Thank you.
Our next presentation this evening is someone else who wants to come shower money on the city and so that's always a welcome thing. County Commissioner Craig Covey here to talk about the results of the Ferndale Blues Festival.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council and staff members. Yes, I am actually here, not as your commissioner, tonight. I'll come to a future meeting and give you some updates on some things that are going on. But six months ago, and it seems like a long time away, we put on the 10th Annual Ferndale Blues Festival from January 28th to February 5th. And we are now able to finally present the awards. We have some pretty cool awards. We also have a substantial donation. This is an annual blues festival that is put on by Ferndale Youth Assistance and the Michigan AIDS Coalition. I'll ask Monica Mills, who is from MAC and my co-chair on the Blues Fest, to come on up if she's available. But we want to thank our sponsors again, real quick, which includes Bud Light, Blue Care Network, Dino's, Level One Bank, The Bar Downstairs, Observer and Eccentric Newspapers, The Metro Times, Our Detroit, Danny's Irish Pub, Buffalo Wild Wings, Hodges Subaru, Patch.com, Ferndale 115, and the Detroit Blues Society. But we have a number of awards to give out. Is there anything you want to share before we start to do some awards?
It was small, you didn't notice. It was AJ's Cafe was also one of our sponsors. That was wonderful.
Very good. Very good. Well, we'll start with this award here, if you want to grab that. That is, what's the name of that award?
Well, these are volunteer awards. And Dennis Hipner was a very, very active volunteer and we recognized Dennis at our volunteer thank you party. And so I don't have an award to hand to him today because he already has his and he's shining it every day, but Dennis is just unbelievable. He delivers more of the little plastic pigs and posters and flyers and I don't know where he gets his energy. He's just running around in the snow or whatever, then he's at the rib tent and he's just a busy, busy guy. So, second to Dennis's adventures.
My wife doesn't know where I get the energy from either. Anyway, it's an honor for me to do this, to award the volunteer award for most concert event outreach to Audrey, Horst, and Josh, Amy, Trevor, who's at their day job, as well as the Ferndale Blues Festival. Most concert event outreach, ruffing blues fans to Ferndale and asking for donations nine out of the 10-day event. I did it three days and let me tell you, that's a job. Especially on Saturday when we had that blizzard. So anyway, if Audrey, Horst, and Josh are here?
I think they might still be working.
Oh, they're still working.
They work together very hard.
But anyway, this is their award.
Another very active volunteer that's been in the planning process of the Blues Festival for many, many years is Ann Hubbard. She comes to us from the city of Royal Oak and the Detroit Blues Society. She's very active as well and I would like her to please hand out another award.
Thank you, Monica and Mr. Mayor of the Blues. You know, it's always fun being a volunteer and it's great recruiting volunteers. So this past January, very early, I'm at the Club Bart, hi, Club Bart. I'm at the Club Bart Holiday Party and Mindy Schwartz says to me, I really want to volunteer for the Ferndale Blues Festival. Every year I say I'm going to do it, but I'm going to do it this year. And I'm like, yeah, okay, good. Okay, so we exchanged contact information and I notified Monica of our good fortune. I said, we got a new volunteer and she's ready for action. So Monica and Mindy get together and Mindy signed up to be the volunteer coordinator for Dino's Rockin' Blues Barbecue Rib Burnout Tent. Oi! And not only did she sign up for that job, she signed up for many of the nine nights of the festival, passing the pig to raise money for MAC and the Ferndale Youth Assistance. And she made a significant donation, making her an outstanding supporter of the Ferndale Blues Festival. In my opinion, she hit the ball hard out of the park and she smiled as she ran all the bases and tagged home. So on behalf of the Ferndale Blues Festival, it's my pleasure to present Mindy Schwartz with this official recognition for a job well done. Outstanding event and rib tent supporter.
All right, I think we're going to, we're going to save this big award for last, but we do have a donation here to give out. And Monica, if you want to join me, you know, it's always fun giving money away. It's one of the best parts and that's really why we do all this, the camaraderie, the fun, the music, the culture supporting downtown. But the Blues Festival has been a joint effort that benefits Ferndale Youth Assistance and Michigan AIDS Coalition. This year, we raised in excess of $19,000 in profits. I have good news for Julie Hall. You don't have to be Chair anymore. They elected me Chair last week of Ferndale Youth Assistance. So, you know, we all end up giving each other money, but it all goes to good causes. So this check goes to Ferndale Youth Assistance, right?
Right.
All right. Thank you kindly. $4,000. Oh, did you see Julie?
There she is. Where did you get the money?
Oh, yeah, I'll give it to Julie Hall. Sure. You got me confused. But finally, the coolest thing we want to do is the Blizzard and the Barbecue Ferndale Blues Festival Awards. This, of course, is the highest award given each year to an individual who goes above and beyond the call of duty. Dean Bach, you ought to help us present this award. And it is, if you recall, folks, the night of the barbecue, we had a blizzard. I think we had about eight or nine inches of snow that day. And think about that when you go outside, it's all pretty. But rain or shine, Dean Bach always manages to be the number one club that raises the most money, that has the most fun. Why don't you present this, Mr. Bach?
All right. This is really difficult because I'm not getting this award this year.
Except for, of course, Dino did raise the most money of all the venues, again, for the ninth year in a row.
Yes. But this year, I don't think it could have been done without the support and actually the annual support of a good friend of mine and a good friend of the city of Ferndale, Mr. Jack Aronson from Garden Fresh Gourmet.
So Jack, this year, you're getting the Blue Pig Award. Jack does considerable donating. He barbecues in the snow. Does all these great things and doesn't even complain a lot. Just a little bit, but thanks a lot, Jack. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you.
There's a great picture too.
We have a nice little souvenir picture of Jack and his wife cooking. Barely see your hand in front of you, but they were out there cooking. Where do I show it to the camera? Where are you at?
I think they're good. Yep, yeah.
Very good. So there you go. Well, thank you very much and Dean has the uncanny ability every year to pick the coldest day of the year. Appreciate that, Dean, but thank you. It's always good to get back to, the city of Ferndale has given so much to us and our business over the years. I don't know if anybody knows this, but actually, the city, they picked our... I don't know if anybody knows this, but actually the city, they picked our first building for us on Woodward Heights. They told me to quit cooking out of the restaurant on Woodward. And after we grew that spot, they actually helped us get the land over here on Banner. So thank you. It's always a pleasure to get back. Thank you.
Jack, thanks so much.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We are now working on the Ferndale Pub Crawl, which is the last Friday of July. We also are working on the first annual Hazel Park Pub Crawl, which will be the last Friday in August, Mr. Mayor of Hazel Park. So we'll be raising more money and having more fun. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for all your work and for your committee. Great job once again. Thank you so much. And for Jack, thank you very much. When, when you were forced to get out of the clubhouse barbecue businesses, when I was forced to learn how to cook because I ate there about four nights a week. So thanks for all you're doing as well. Thanks. Our next presentation is actually just kind of a quick fun thing that I'm going to do. The city of Ferndale was awarded a, an award from the Metro Times this year that I just wanted to share with everyone. So I'm gonna hold this up. Just to let you know, we got the Metro Times Best of Detroit 2011 Reader's Choice, Reader's Choice Award. So the readers selected us as the best suburban neighborhood to get a good housing deal. I think Derek, who is here, would agree with that. And so if you're in the market for a good deal on a great house in a great community, according to the Metro Times readers and probably everybody in this room, we're the place to go do it. So just congratulations to ourselves.
Very nice.
And our last presentation is Peggy Snow, who is here to present the June 2011 Beautification Awards. Peggy, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, everyone. This is starting our 2011 award season. We give the awards June, July, August, and September. And we also, we give a black award and then of course holidays later on. But the first, I'm just announcing tonight, all the winners come to the September meeting to get their certificates. And so I'll just announce the names tonight. And the first one is our commercial one. And it's Waltman Management, Waldman Management, 271 East Oak Ridge. It's a very lovely apartment building and I think it's kind of eye-catching because it has balconies. And I know a lot of people looking for apartments really love to have a balcony. And it's always nicely maintained with shrubs. And when I call, I, I got ahold of the, the manager of, the company owns a number of buildings in the city and I got ahold of one of the managers. And he said every spring that they, they go around the buildings and they see what needs to be done, like this particular building, some of the railings needed to be painted. They were getting rusty. And he says, we have a chore list for each building. And it sounded just like what we do at our house, you know? So I thought that was great that they put so much care into the buildings. And the residential, one of the residentials is Paulette Hill at 2340 Brickley. And she has a lovely front yard, beautiful, beautiful grass, and she has a nice assortment of shrubs and trees and flowers and a little garden, flower garden out in the center of her front lawn and whatever. And she's always said, and she's, oh, you can't believe I got an award. Look at all the weeds. Well, I didn't see any. But that's how gardeners are, I guess. So, and then the last residential award is DeeDee and Norm Powell at 445 West Strayton. And they were nominated by a neighbor and the neighbor wrote dramatically changed a drab, uninspiring landscape to an outstanding vista, which I thought was very nice. And I was also glad that the, the person who nominated them wrote something because when I went to tell them they won, we were so busy talking about what a great city Ferndale was, I never really asked them about their house. I, I got home and I, I thought, oh, my goodness. But they were saying how they lived in different places, including Birmingham, and how much happier they are here, how they love Ferndale. And they've only lived here seven years. They just think it's a wonderful community. And so I'm always happy to hear that. And I'll be back in, well, if anybody has any nominations, they can call Roseanne at the City Yard and she'll pass it on, the information on to us. And I would also like to say that we're looking for new members. It's a lot of fun. We meet once a month, the second Thursday of the month, and it's a lot of fun. We look at the pictures and we decide who to pick for that particular month and whatever. And so we'd like to have some new members. If anybody's interested, they can come up to City Hall here and fill out an application. So thank you very much.
Well, Peggy, thank you. I, I would agree with the Powells, that Ferndale is a great city to live in. And one of the great things about it is the Beautification Committee and its Chair Peggy Snow, who does a lot of work on behalf of the city. Thank you, Peggy. All right, that is our last presentation this evening. So we will close presentations. Our next order of business is a public hearing. Let me, let me just sort of preface the public hearing by saying that it is, it is the job of council tonight to decide whether to approve the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program. By our charter, we have a Highway Committee that meets anytime a special assessment district needs to be formed in the sidewalk. I mean, the, the Highway Committee met this evening to suggest approving the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program. So the purpose of tonight's public hearing is for council to approve entering into the program. Now, I know there may be some residents here this evening that want to talk specifically about their property and we'll let you know how to go about registering those concerns to our DPW department. But the job of council this evening will be to decide whether to, to go forward with the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program. So with that, I would like to formally open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on the creation of the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program. Yes? Come, come right up. Thanks.
I hate to be the first, but, and I hate to be the barrier of kind of a concern, okay? I'm not opposed to the agenda. I think that it's a good program. But I have questions about the city trees that had been planted in the Green Belt in the 60s that are creating so much damage to our city sidewalks and we, as residents, having to pay for them to be replaced over and over and over. Just my street alone, first of all, I, I've got to say, I don't have a tree in front of my home any longer. I had it removed.
By the way, could you give us your name and, and address?
Oh, okay. My name is Carla Phillips.
Carla.
And I live at 1886 Ardmore Drive and I grew up at 1851 Ardmore Drive. I've been in Ferndale for 55 years. How many people here have been in here for 55 years? Anybody? Oh, no. Eddie, there. When I was a young girl, when they just, when they came through with the 12-ton drain, they wiped out our sidewalks. They replaced them, of course, our streets, et cetera, et cetera. After that, a year later, they came through and planted the trees. Residents had no choice. And I say this, not actually with proof of that, but I do remember that my father had planted a crimson king red maple tree, beautiful tree, up front. My dad went round and around with the city over that tree because they removed it and replaced it with the Japanese, whatever they are on our street. Anyway, these trees have their roots stick out of the ground. They're more dangerous than the sidewalks are. I think it's time for us to evaluate the tree situation, replace the trees, so the residents don't have to keep paying over and over for good concrete that was poured five years ago. I, again, I have no tree in front of my home, but I'm speaking for my neighbors. But I am here also because I came here when you replaced our sidewalks a few years back. At that time, first of all, I'm a journeyman, operator engineer, heavy equipment operator. I operate 936s, cranes, dozers, et cetera, et cetera. That year, I came home with a 936. It was straddling the Green Belt. That's a 35,000-pound piece of equipment on four-inch-thick concrete. Now, you can't tell me that my sidewalk is my responsibility when the workers did the damage. All right? I came before Mayor Porter at that time and we agreed that I would pay half of them, half of the price for the squares. This time, I opposed paying half because a year later, four of the squares that are in front of my driveway and as well, a 40,000-pound piece of equipment, well, actually, with the three-ton of material that was in the bucket, we're talking 42,000 pounds on a six-inch-thick slab of concrete. Nothing is going, and even goes through a lot of stress with that, sir. So I think that, I think that I am opposed to having to pay for the replacement of the damage that was done before, as well as replacing squares that were replaced five years ago. So I am opposed. I think it's time for us to evaluate the construction companies and their responsibilities. Again, I'm a trained journeyman. The company that you hired, we're not trained operators. Anybody can get behind a car and go forward and backwards. Same with a piece of equipment. But weights and measures are a very important issue and I think we have to consider what they're doing. And the inspector at that time, the county inspector that was inspecting the job, I red flagged him right away because that was an issue. And it's now an issue again. So again, there's three squares that they've marked. I'm not opposed to repairing what, you know, years of damage have done, but what they've done, I am opposed to paying for that. So let's.
So what I would suggest on your specific property is if you sign up on the sheet in the back, we have a sign-up sheet back there, and give us your name and number.
Yes.
Or address. Byron or somebody from our DPW department will look at your specific situation.
It's not just my situation. I'm here for everybody on my street.
Here's the comments about the trees and that's a broader issue.
It is a very broad issue. It is. Okay. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Horr is at 1550 Spencer. I gotta agree with that lady there because we got a lot of trees on our streets and I think the city years ago just strategically planted those trees so that they would screw up the city sidewalk and not the city curb. And I'll, and I mean, because I'm looking down here and just like that lady back there, I don't have a tree that's interfering with my sidewalk work. But these sidewalk slabs were replaced on the last one and my neighbors are getting hit up again. You know, that's just a money-making deal for the city and something needs to be done. I mean, that, those people should be here tonight.
Which people are those?
The people that got these trees on those sidewalks. So you guys would understand. I mean, if you had a room full here, it would mean more than two of us getting up here complaining about that. You know? I mean, and you know how angry I can get? That tree was on my property and I had the engineer out at my house for a problem that didn't get resolved. I had two cement guys, I had two cement guys in the last time out there and they told me the same thing. You're gonna go ahead and pay that 90 bucks for that flag and it's not gonna get resolved. And it was right. Because I still got the water problem. It just takes a little time for it to go away, just like it did the last time. But it was back when city of Ferndale closed the alleys and that, and I, my property at that time, which I didn't live in, had a driveway from the alley. Okay? So if you take a look at my driveway, which is hooked right to my neighbors, my driveway goes like this now. It's exactly like that. So my driveway was put in afterwards when they closed the alley and it's, I got a, basically a common driveway with my neighbor. And what the city did is, or whoever approved this type of plan, when that driveway was put in, they just left the hump in the middle. Okay? So I paid 90 bucks, actually $180 the last time, to get two flags replaced and that, with the same thing that still happens today, and you just gotta give the water time to drain out of there and it does it. And I had that tall, skinny guy, that engineer that Ferndale had at the time, I had him out there. Me and him were going at it right there and I, you know, you're wrong. I don't have a four-year degree. He's got one, but he's wrong. If he was here today, I'd show him today and the next time it rained. And that. Now, my next question is, is what do we do to, if we fix our slabs on our own? Do we have to have an inspection is what I'm getting at?
Yes. And, and I'll let, can, if, if you don't mind Byron, would you answer that specifically? But the answer, because the shorter answer is yes, you do have to have it inspected. Yeah. Like any other construction project.
Well, I can just raise, point is, is I can just raise my slab, just raise it. I don't even have to tear it out. It's, it's a slab that's perfectly good. It's not even cracked. It just sunk a little bit. So we're just talking about raising it up and, and filling underneath with some sand, packing it in there and, and that, because it's only down that much and they, and I got a, a red A or reddish pink A on there. And it's only down about like that much. Okay? So I can raise that for the price of a couple bags of sand, which is a lot less than what I, whatever is gonna be charged on this one flag.
But Dennis, I, what I would say, what I told Carla is on your specific slab, if you, if, on your flag, if you want to put your name and number and, and address on there, DPW will come out and if there's a way to, to raise it instead of replace it, I think that our engineers will listen to your argument on that.
I mean, there's companies that'll come out and raise it for you for a nominal fee too. And that, so, okay.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Can you come along with that, please?
Sure.
I do want, I do want to suggest to you that there are alternatives other than replacing perfectly good concrete. There is a system called mud jacking where they pump up the mud under the concrete that lifts it. And it's a permanent fix where the asphalt cold passion will not repair the problem. So mud jacking would be less expensive for the residents. And again, the tree issue, again, I think that's the city problem there. And I think that the residents need to come forward and come together, just like the gentleman said, because it would take more voices for us to pull together stronger. But mud jacking would be much, much more effective and cost-efficient for everyone concerned and a lot less time, a lot less, just a lot less manpower as well. It's worth the effort of considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public to speak on this public hearing? Hello, sir.
Good evening. Ellen Sauve, 1120 Nama Road. I believe, just says two people bought the trees. I have a few slabs, I believe, that the silver maple took the, took the slabs and broke them, jacked them up. And regarding to more people getting involved, I know Madison Heights had a class active lawsuit against the city for damages done by city trees to their property. I suggest that maybe we ought to get together and think about doing that if we don't get any relief. So I have a couple issues too, just like the pounding. You put these site, you put these new slabs in, we still get the water. In the wintertime, it's hell because the water freezes there. We have, we're responsible for keeping it ice-free. Then we gotta put salt, which kills, which hurts the concrete, kills the grass. And I suggest too that take the, I don't have a problem with the replacing the sidewalks. I suggest you take it from the Public Improvement Fund instead of charging us because I have businesses that around me that don't even have sidewalks, that their people, employees use the sidewalks, but they don't have to bear the expense of having these sidewalks in front of their house. I just think it's unfair. So I think there ought to be a better way to do it. And I just think that Public Improvement Fund would be taking it from there, would be happy. And instead of putting the burden on me, my bill is $1,100. I can't afford it. You raised my taxes. I didn't, my taxes haven't went down and here I am again in front of you. How many gelatos am I gonna have to not drink to pay for that now? So, basically, yeah, I don't, I don't have minded you having a sidewalk program, just I don't want to be, be responsible for it. It's a public, it's a public sidewalk.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
I'm Jim O'Brien and I'm connected with a little church on Camden and Wanda. And, and we have sidewalk on, on Camden, we have sidewalk on Wanda, we have sidewalk on the back side. We have the lots across the street and we have sidewalk here and sidewalk there. Now, I did a walk-through that with the minister last week and, and somebody's making a cut on, on deciding what repairs need to be done. Now, our levy of $1,500 is way over the top. We're already running a $3,000-$4,000 deficit budget and, and I think there ought to be some other city funds that would take care of this. We've been in that property for 22 years and, and I don't remember, and I'm the treasurer for, for the church, having had any sidewalk things before. Now, in the walk-around, I just, I think that it's outrageous. I mean, I guess I would ask, I, I don't think you should approve this replacement thing. I think you should send the engineer back out there and let him see, I think maybe one, one-third of what's marked needs to be done.
So, so let me just respond to a couple of the points you made. We have a consultant, Giffords Webster, which is a reputable engineering company that makes the initial assessment of what, what flags need to be replaced and what's not. But if you disagree with them, again, put your name on that list and our DPW folks will go out there and, and make a second evaluation. So that's number one.
I'd like to.
Number two, because you are a corner lot, as you've described it, you would automatically qualify for what we call our hardship program and that will be coming later this year. will go out there and, and make a second evaluation. So, that's number one. Number two, because you are a corner lot, as you've described it, you would automatically qualify for what we call our hardship program, and that will be coming later this year. Once you get that bill, you can defer the costs of that replacement over three years. So, just so you know, that's an option available to you. You would qualify that as a corner lot.
That, that's not an option. That, that's bad business.
It's not an option.
That's not an option.
You know, to...
The charge?
Yeah, the charge interest, and, and it, you know, interest on, on, on an assessment that shouldn't happen, or that should be greatly reduced. It would be much better to have your engineers come out, review it, what needs to be done and, and what is gross.
Well, that would be the first step, and so that's what I'm inviting you to do. And we will have someone from DPW come out and look at your specific circumstance and see if they agree with you that, that those flags should not have been marked as, as needing repair. So, that would be the first step in the process, and we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Anyone else here this evening that would like to speak on the sidewalk replacement program? All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing portion of the program. And we, and it is now up to council to decide if we want to proceed with the 2011 sidewalk repair program in the city of Ferndale. There is a motion in your package, which would be appropriate if someone wanted to make that, but I would also entertain questions about the program before, before we go there, if there are any questions.
No, I have a comment, but not a question. So, I have the motion to approve, I would move to approve the resolution to proceed with the 2011 sidewalk replacement program and authorize the city clerk to sign that resolution.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Now, now I would open the floor to questions, comments, or about the program.
I guess my, my first comment is that there was at least one insinuation, and I, I think I heard two, that someone is, is pocketing money off of this program. This is, as we go through our budget every year, this is something that we look at as, this is a revenue-neutral program. If anything, the city puts out money from our general fund to replace the sidewalk ramps and things that aren't on people's properties. So, the bill that residents receive is exactly the bill that comes, that is, the costs that comes from the bidding process, from the people who do the cement work. It's not the city doing the cement work. There's no one at the city who has any interest in there being more or less flags marked. I think we've established a separation between the engineering firm, which also goes through bidding process, and the people who pour the concrete, which again goes through a bidding process to find the lowest cost. We, we try to get the lowest cost for our residents. And I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that there's a perception that either the city makes money off of it, or that someone is illegally making money off of this. But it's very concerning to me. Not true.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions from council? I would reiterate for the information of our residents, a couple of things that I mentioned. If you are in this district, and perhaps I should define the district that we're doing this year, by the way, the district is properties that are south of Nine Mile and east of the railroad tracks. So, if you're in that property, you should have gotten a notice from the city. If, if parts of your sidewalk have been marked as needing repair, you should have received a notice from us about tonight's meeting as well. If, but just because you're not here doesn't mean you don't have an opportunity to question what our engineers have said about your sidewalk. And if you do question it, contact our DPW department, Byron over there. We'll send a DPW worker out there to evaluate the assessment of your sidewalk. So, that's number two. When you do get a bill, if you do get a bill for your sidewalk, and you, and you would like to spread those payments out, you can qualify for a hardship in Ferndale. Every year, we have a hardship committee that will be instituted later this year. You can appear before that hardship committee to have the expenses spread out over three years, and so that is also available to our residents. I just wanna make that clear as well. If there is no further questions or comments of council...
A question?
A question, yes. Yes.
Who, who engineers this project?
Giffles and Webster is the city's engineering consultant for the sidewalk program.
So, you hire a separate...
We hire a consultant to do the initial review of the neighborhoods and tell us in their independent judgment which sidewalks need to be repaired.
So, when there's engineering... Do they oversee the engineering of it?
Byron?
Or does the city engineers do that?
I'll let the, I'll let Byron answer that question. I thought you were gonna get away without getting up today, weren't you?
Yeah, how are you? Fine.
It's a program, the city has established criteria for sidewalk replacement. That was in the 1990s. Giffles and Webster's follows that criteria. So, there's very specific criteria. This is not judgment where someone decides that on their own. There is a criteria established by the city. That criteria was also sent out with the letters to the homeowners explaining what a stubber was, for example, anything half an inch or more for scaling, for cracks and so forth. So, they follow the criteria established by the city of Ferndale.
Thank you. Thank you.
They don't establish the criteria. The council has established the criteria.
We have established the criteria.
And the, the council can change the criteria and say a stubber could be one inch or two inches. They've decided that it's a half inch. So, they, they go with that. Now, up until this year, we did have a engineering technician, which, whose position was eliminated. As a result of that, we, we weren't able to fill the position. There were no funding for that. So, in a way of trying to keep expenses, we kinda targeted some contractual work that we still need to do. And the, the, the payment of, there's a certain administrative fee over and above the, the cost of replacing the sidewalk, which we'll pay for the engineering.
City manager.
Yes, I just wanna add, the criteria has been established, it's pretty much uniform among all the cities based upon various court cases. And currently, there is a bill to restore. There was some, a consideration that communities got that would allow us to have a higher criteria in the past, but the courts, based upon plaintiff lawyers, basically, have decided if we don't fix the sidewalk or make individuals fix it, then the city as part of its insurance, even though we all buy homeowners' insurance, is responsible for any slip and falls. And some of those can be very expensive. And as I said, there's a bill going through that would allow us to increase the criteria and be a little bit more friendly on it, but that's currently not the case based upon what the courts have decided. So, the criteria established that's used by the engineers is pretty much based upon recent court cases and our responsibilities. If we don't fix it or make the individuals fix it, then it, we bought it. And so, that's the basis of the criteria.
Answer your question?
Sort of.
Thank you.
I just, the criteria about the trip and fall, I wish they'd be a little more adamant about the businesses removing their snow when we have two feet of snow. They can get on a sidewalk with a little trip.
That's a different public hearing, sir, but we'll pick that one up in the...
And one other comment was about, I just, I thought, I, have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, the, the public hearing is technically closed, but I'll, if you got a pressing issue, I'll, come on up.
Since he's here, the question I have is, I noticed on six or seven of the pieces that they were flagged sometime earlier, two years ago, three years ago, four years ago. Where do we suppose that the previous efforts to do this kind of thing, and, and the flags are still on the sidewalks, but what's the history on that? Or does he know?
I don't know. I'm looking at...
So, it looks like maybe something was done, and then it, that wasn't done?
Because the, the most recent evaluation was done recently, right? So, um...
Sidewalks, the curtained sidewalks that are proposed for replacement were marked last fall.
Oh, were marked last fall.
And then we, we came back, we came back to re-mark because some of the paint had, had disappeared or worn off. The last time we were...
That explains it, last fall.
The last time we were in, in the area was in 2000. So, whenever we go forward, for example, next year, it will be eleven years. We're on the second ten-year program cycle. We skipped a year. It would've been ten years, but they skipped a year. So, whenever a sidewalk program comes before council, those sidewalks, that, that particular part of the city had been replaced eleven years ago.
That's, that's a good point. This neighborhood has not been in this program for eleven years, and so it'll be another ten or eleven years before we're back. You don't agree?
No, I don't agree.
Uh, any, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Who's the horse, the concrete people, that follow the rules?
I...
In other words, am I? I take, I told them, take the root out, because I've been in the engineer corps for over seven years, and I know what roots will do, and what water will do when it freezes. It gulls, and it cracks. On my street alone, there's fourteen blocks of slabs that's marked. That any of those fourteen, ten of them, is because water got underneath, and when it froze, because they were put in in the last part of the fall before winter set in. So, where'd the water go? Down, underneath, because that's the loosest, where the loose dirt is.
So, I'm not sure I understand your question, sir. I'm not sure I understand your question.
Who is making the people that do the work responsible for doing it right?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have, we have engineering inspectors who inspect the work.
They go by, and they will not listen to anybody.
Well, that's what we're here for, to listen to you, and, and if you disagree with how they do the work again, we're happy to have the folks come out.
If we have to, I can go to JAG headquarters in Washington, DC, and the seniors will be beneficial by it. They will take and investigate the whole city, which means for forty years, from the time I've been here, they'll be inspecting your books.
Thank you, sir.
I don't wanna do it, but somebody's gonna have to make those layers of concrete a little bit more responsible, listen to what the people are saying, and react accordingly, not just to make the money.
That's what we're here for. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Additional comments of council? The public hearing is closed, ma'am. I'm sorry. I've given you three opportunities.
...the project and how it's, it, how it's decided. I was just curious.
Come on up. All right.
When the program goes up for bid, where is this advertised? Does it mean green sheets for all contractors in Oakland County, or all counties to, to, to...
I'll let our engineer answer that. Because we had, we had six bids, this was done in our normal bid process, um...
I'm curious, yeah. And again, the cheaper price is not always the better worker or the better job completed. So, it's something, again, do we go into their history? Do we check out, you know, do we just check out their references, so to speak?
Yes.
You know, because this is important stuff anymore.
And in fact, this company, by the way, this company has done the sidewalk work in Royal Oak, and we got very good references.
Are they the ones that did our sidewalk projects last time?
No.
Bravo. Okay. So, what company is it that we plan to hire this time?
Giorgi Concrete LLC. G-I-O-R-G-I.
Limited liability corporation. LLC, limited liability corporation. Doesn't that scare you a little bit?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
It doesn't. They, they've been reviewed in our bid process, and we are comfortable that this is a company that is capable of carrying out our program.
Okay. Okay, then, I'm gonna trust your judgment, and I'm hoping that you take a look at everybody's comments here today. And again, you know, the water standing on the sidewalks is an issue for everyone, but the trees, the tree roots are not allowing the water to seep under and soak in. Our, our green belts are higher than our sidewalks is, which is a major part of the issue of the water standing on our sidewalks, which creates excessive damage. It's something that maybe we should, you know, pull our green belts out, lower them, you know, allow a better drainage system. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right. So, of council, any additional questions or comments from council?
I have one comment.
Yes, council.
Couple of comments. One, I think, I think the tree root is an issue for a lot of people, and I think the long-term impact for me on that is, what I'm hearing is people would rather remove trees and over a long-term period of time, that lowers our tree inventory and our urban forestry canopy, which helps lower our carbon, our carbon footprint, and the benefits of trees are very valuable. So, I, I kinda feel like we need to find some balance here, because we have lost a lot of mature trees over quite these few decades, and so I'm not sure if that's part of this solution tonight, but it is a long-term concern that removal of trees lowers the attractiveness, attractiveness of neighborhoods, and shade provides a lot of qualities in terms of reducing heating costs for our homes. So, I think there needs to be some balance found here, because people are choosing to remove trees as a way to solve their sidewalk problem. And I think that has a longer-term impact, long-term.
Don't just remove and replace it. With a newer, younger tree, that's not gonna provide...
And the balance goes back to the homeowner and also the city. So, looking at privately-owned property as well as city-owned property. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
That we should look at that.
Yep. Good point. Additional comments? Then I think, Madam Clerk, we're ready for a roll call.
You got you. Council members, Galloway?
Yes.
Tiana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The sidewalk replacement program is passed. At this point, it is time for call to audience. As you all know, I think, call to audience is thirty minutes now, and more time if needed at the end of the meeting before call to council. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less on any item that is not on the agenda, as you have an opportunity to talk about those at that time. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone who would like to address the audience this evening, beginning at 8:39 Everyone has had their say. No, nobody for call to audience this evening?
No.
Oh. Good evening.
You're watching Peter.
Wow. Good evening.
I'm Nancy Sovey. I'm Alan Sovey.
Hi, Nancy.
1120 East Nine Mile. I just have a comment. I, we just got our summer tax bill, and it's no secret that we were on the committee to not raise our taxes. My bill now is four thousand, one hundred, forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for just the summer taxes alone. So, you have to understand where us, as well as a lot of people in this room, are, are upset about now you're charging for sidewalks. I've got city operating costs. I got all this stuff on here, and you're, it's probably gonna go up again next year. So, it's like, you have to understand where people are coming from, you know? The hard economic times. I'm unemployed. I know a lot of people are unemployed. I can't pay this, but you know what? You're gonna get your money, because I don't want you coming after me. But you have to understand, you have to take people's feelings and their hard work and what they're losing or can't afford, food on the table. What? How, how much more does it have to go up? I mean, I saw this, I about had a stroke today. It's just, you know, you have to understand, take people's feelings into account, you know? Trees and sidewalks, who cares when you're talking about people's lives, their homes? They could lose their homes. I mean, I understand Ferndale's a great place to live, because we have a lot of empty homes. There's nothing here. You know, people have to go where they can get more bang for their buck, and it's not Michigan.
Thank you. Good evening, Betty.
My name is Betty LaFronboise. I live on Academy Street, near Hilton Road, and my question is, is there any consideration of returning Hilton Road into a four-lane highway, a street again?
Returning what? I'm sorry?
Hilton Road. They turned it into a bike. Very seldom you see a bike, a bike on Hilton Road. You might see them on the sidewalk, and when the trucks, the huge trucks wanna park, they And when the trucks, the huge trucks wanna park, they can't park by the curb, because it's a bike lane. So they park in the center, on the turn lane. And when I pull out of my street, if I wanna turn right, that's okay. But to turn left, I can't see the traffic on the other side of those big trucks. So, and then tonight, coming in from work, I noticed I was stopped at the traffic light, because there was a train. And I waited and waited. The cars that were coming off of Nine Mile, they couldn't turn south onto Hilton Road because of the traffic backed up. And if we would've had our four lanes, it'd been much easier. And I just wonder if they ever take any consideration or do any studies on that bike route.
Well, I'm not aware of any active consideration to change the traffic pattern on Hilton.
You think I'm the only one that notices this?
Pardon me?
You think I'm the only one that notices?
I don't know. But I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Well, I do wish they would do our studies on it, because truly, there aren't that many bikes on that street. And if it was turned back into a four-lane, a four-lane again, it'd be much nicer. One day, I counted the traffic coming south, heading north, like I was going south on Hilton Road, because of a train. I counted 22 cars that came single file. Now, if you had the four-lane, I would've only had to count 10 and 1/2. So I just wanted to know if sometime you might be able to do a studies on it, okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
You sure you will?
I'm not making any promises.
I'm just wondering.
This is your opportunity to talk to us. This isn't a debate.
Well, we'd like to have an answer someday, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else for call to audience this evening?
I've got another issue here. I've got another issue. Again, it's about our city. For years and years, I have, like I said, I've lived in my home for 36 years that I'm in right now. For the last 36 years, I've taken care of four yards, other than including my own. With the wild grapevine issue, the trees growing under the power lines, the vines growing up the trees into the power lines. It's been an issue with our cable for a few years. I've called DTE, of course, they come out. But again, we're paying over and over. Everything is getting higher and higher, because the repeat of work. Now, when the alleys were given to the property owners, split up amongst the property owners, at that time, there was a code that nothing was to be, you know, trees to be planted, you know? All wild growth was to be maintained, you know? Now, we're in a situation where a lot of the homes are empty. And so now, we've got banks who don't even have, are clueless of what the property even looks like. And again, it's ridiculous that we have to keep sending city workers to do the same thing over and over again. I think it's time to start issuing, if you gave somebody a traffic ticket for speeding, and they went out and were speeding again tomorrow, they would get another ticket for it. It's time to start increasing the homeowners, finding the homeowners. Or, again, most homeowners that have been in their homes for 55 years take care of their property. I live Ferndale. But you know what? I can sit on my porch, people can sit on their porch and look at my house and enjoy the view, because I take care of it. But I sit on my porch and look at theirs, and I see trash. I see vines, I see garbage, I see empty homes. It's pitiful. It's time to start making these empty homes, the people that own this property, to stand up to it. I know it's hard. But, you know, again, we just keep paying over and over for the same thing, kind of like the sidewalks scenario. It's just time to draw a line. Say, this is it, people. You know, I mean, again, you put liens on our taxes for sidewalk, but what about, you know, it's time to put liens on their taxes, the banks especially, that are, you know, are just letting these homes just deteriorate, people that have walked away from their homes because they can't afford it anymore. It's time to start putting liens on those properties, make people pay for this, instead of us having to do it over and over. It's costing us all too much money.
Thank you. Thank you. And you're at your three minutes. And I will say, we do have code enforcement. And if you have an issue with the neighbor, I encourage you to call our code enforcement or Derek in Community Development. Thank you. Anyone else for call to audience this evening? All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that the council considers as routine. And we enact in one motion, unless somebody would like to remove any items from the consent agenda.
Your honor, I would like to remove consent agenda items 7D and 7E, just for clarification on the motion.
All right. Anything else on the consent agenda? All right. Then a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
As amended, without D and E.
And with the addition of O.
O. Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Any discussion?
Is where I suggest to remove another one?
Oh, sure.
Okay. That would be B.
B? As in boy?
Like in boy.
Okay. B. All right. We do amend your motion to also include B being removed.
If the city clerk is comfortable with a friendly amendment, I would also...
All right.
...B as in boy.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Technology taking a moment to catch up. Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda passes minus items B, D, and E. That brings us to the regular agenda. And that would include those three items so mentioned. So item B, and Sherry, you asked to have that removed. Do you want to speak to that item?
I see that the Live Green Fair had not requested noise ordinance exemption. But your proposal is to waive the city noise ordinance on this. It said, the police chief said the enforcement would be easier if it were waived. And it sounds to me like there would be no enforcement if it were waived. And if they are not asking for it be waived, if the Live Green Fair believe they can keep it below the 75 decibels in the commercial during that time period, and that 75 is a pretty lenient rate, then they should not have an exemption for noise ordinance, especially when they're not asking for one.
I'm looking at the city manager, but I might be open to others who might have a...
The DDA representative isn't here yet.
The DDA representative is not here.
Typically, when these come up...
Would this be... And Michael is no longer here, I know. Oh, no. He's in the back. Michael, do you have a comment on her concern? Not to put you on the spot, but the fact that you're coming forward tells me you do.
This particular event does not have any live entertainment. Not the green fair.
So it's something about a stage near Woodward?
Live music and speakers and workshops. I read it through twice, so I believe that's what it says. But people can have music and keep it down into fewer than 300 feet loud.
Sorry, I got that one confused. We got so many special events on the agenda. This one does, he is having live entertainment during that weekend of events. And according to the...
Do you know why we would exempt them?
According to the ordinance, that special events qualify automatically for a waiver of noise ordinance.
So it would be your recommendation that we give this waiver, even if they hadn't known to request it? It is the first year that they're doing this as a full-scale fair.
Well, they seem to have reasonable hours. Four to 10, 12 to 10. Well, it's later than it was last year, 12 to 5. Well, I've got the police number memorized.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about former consent agenda item B, special event permit for the Ferndale Live Green Fair on Friday, July 15? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Has there been a motion?
We didn't have a motion.
Oh. Yeah, that would be in order. Oh, Sherry?
Yes. This was removed from the agenda, for the clerk wanted to make a clarification. So I think that should be done before we discuss anything else.
Those are on the next two. That is on D and E. You removed this one. She removed D and E.
I removed B.
I thought we're on...
We're on D.
We're on B.
B. B as in boy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The one that you pulled. Yeah. Nope, that's okay. So, thank you. We need a motion.
I would move to approve the special event permit for the Ferndale Live Green Fair, as stated in our packet.
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Any additional comments or questions? Madam Clerk, now, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Piana. This is on the green fair still.
On B.
And is it live music or no live music?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yes. And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item passes. Our next item of business is former consent agenda item D, approval of the special event permit for Pig and Whiskey on Saturday, July 30, 2011. And Madam Clerk, you pulled this item.
Thank you, your honor. This is just a minor oversight on our part. Anytime that an event is asking to have liquor sales or service on city property, it's customary to have the organizers execute a lease agreement with the city for that public property. City attorney pointed out to me today that we had overlooked that. So the only reason I pulled these two items was to just add to the motion, subject to the organizer executing that lease agreement with the city.
Thank you. Are there questions on this? A motion would be in order.
I move to approve the special event permit for the Pig and Whiskey on Saturday, July 30, from 1:00 to 11:00 PM, on East Troy Street, from Woodward Avenue to the library parking lot. As detailed in Event Director's summary and revised on 6/20 to reflect the consensus of the committee.
That is moved. Is there a support?
Support.
Support by Galloway. Sherry, on this item?
Yes. This one's going to be put on by the same people putting on the DIY Street Fair, which is your next item. And if Mr. Larry's explanation to me is correct, then a special event with live entertainment gets an automatic waiver, no matter how obnoxious they have been in the past and intend to be in the present. Too loud, too long, and too late. This is...
Your honor, if I may address that?
Yes. Sherwin.
After the DIY event last year, Mr. Johnston met with members of staff to discuss the noise issues. They were satisfied, I mean, we were satisfied with the way that Mr. Johnston plans to address them this year. He's repositioning the stage. The police chief has asked that alcohol sales stop 30 minutes prior to the end of the event, so that people can clear out on time. The special event committee talked about this issue with both events. And we're quite satisfied that Mr. Johnston has taken the proper steps to avoid the same situation that we had last year. Am I correct, Chief?
Chief, if you...
Where we can hear it half a mile away.
Chief, if you want to address or comment on that?
I would add to Sherwin's comments, is that we, at the special events committee meeting, we did discuss the fact that these events are music-oriented. And that if they do get a special events permit, that unless there is action by council, that it will be waived. So whether or not that it becomes a council decision. But the committee decision was that if we're going to approve the event, the crux of the event was that it's a music event. So if council chooses to approve the event, they're approving a event with music, which is going to be loud, and it has in the parameters of the timeframe are there. So we fully understood that there's going to be noise, that there's going to be noise. But that wasn't the concern of the committee, because they're doing exactly what they, they had parameters that we were concerned about that they addressed. But if this is approved, then it would be approved with knowing, fully knowing that there is going to be music in the evenings.
But knowing there's going to be music, do you feel satisfied that Mr. Johnston has addressed some of the issues of the previous issue?
He's addressed as best he can.
Yep.
But the understanding is that there's going to be loud music well into the evening. So if council chooses to approve it, there's, you know, we fully well know that there's going to be loud music up until 11 o'clock.
11 PM. Yep.
Loud music, because it's a drinking event, not a music event. And Ford had a better idea when they had their 50th anniversary of the Mustang, one of my favorite cars. They had music of the 60s. And as my neighbor said, she went onto Nine Mile Road, she listened to the music, she enjoyed the music, she walked across Nine Mile Road, across the parking lot by Western Market, across the alley, into her backyard, and then she couldn't hear it anymore. And that shows that music doesn't have to be loud, and it can be enjoyed by the people who are there to enjoy it. And the rest of us can listen to our radios and TVs and our own music of choice. Thank you.
This motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item passes. The next item is the approval of the special event permit for the DIY Street Fair on Friday, September 16, 2011. And Madam Clerk, if I hear you, it's the same language we want to add to this as you just did to the previous one.
That's exactly correct, your honor.
All right.
I would move approval of the special event permit for the DIY Street Fair with the noted change.
Is there support?
Support. And I guess my comment...
Moved by Baker, I mean, moved by Galloway, supported by Baker.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I guess my comment, and the applicant is here tonight, so he is, you know, hearing concerns and questions. And music is obviously an integral part of this event. And it's one of the things that brings a new audience to downtown Ferndale and makes this event successful. But, you know, when it comes to how late things go and how loud things are, I'd like to see if the changes that were made this year can help address that. And then clearly, it's, you know, it's up to council if next year, it's the prerogative of council that it stop at 9 o'clock. Perhaps that's the conversation that we have with the applicant. But it sounds like they've already, some of the concerns from last year have already been addressed. And I would hope that it's a little bit less disruptive this year, although I don't think we can ever make everyone happy all the time.
My memory may be faulty, but I don't remember getting that many complaints about the DIY last year. I thought there was a transit, you know, first year, some concerns, and then last year, I can't remember getting any. But Chief, you'd probably know.
Last year, we had complaints on Friday night. And we spoke of this at the committee meeting. And although there was not any appreciable change on Saturday and Sunday, we had very few, if any, complaints on Saturday and Sunday. Ones on Friday were addressed, and they were also addressed at the, some of the timeframes that we addressed at the committee meeting. They were all agreed upon by Mr. Johnston. And we hope that that will alleviate some of the problem. But there were some complaints as far as way as the Far East Side. But there were some complaints on Friday night last year, and not so much Saturday and Sunday.
Thanks, Chief. Sherry?
The word is futility. I was talking to a neighbor, and she was saying what she was hearing on her second floor recently. And I said, well, did you call the police? She said, no, it's futile. And if people are getting nothing happening on a Friday night to make it lower, then it's going to go on for Saturday and Sunday as well. Someone I had talked to not too long after that, a year ago, said he was in the Woodward Avenue Brewery with some friends, and he was having a good time. And then they started this street fair stuff, and they left. They left an otherwise good time they were having in that establishment, because it was too loud for the customers. And not to, you know, those of us who start mowing our lawns in the middle of those noise because we might as well make our own noise, but futility is why you're not getting the calls for every time these things annoy the people, that it's annoying, and that's not the way to live in your town.
Any final thoughts or comments? Yes, sir.
Sure. I just wanna say, Chris Johnston, I organize the DIY Street Fair with some other people, and own Woodward Avenue Brewers, and the Emery and the Loving Touch, and a 14-year Ferndale resident as well. I know it's not a popular decision to do something like this, and I know that we, as the event organizer, we can't please everyone, but it is a music-driven event. Those evening hours are when the vendors there, whether they're restaurants or people who make things in their house, Ferndale residents, actually sell the most things, that's when it's, kinda pays for itself. This year, we are paying more for city services, which I understand why we are, you know, for DPW and the police, and I, it's by the hours of the event that basically allow us to do that and really make it possible. It's not a huge money-making event, it's a big event, but, you know, don't be confused by the size of it, and it's really, to me, all about Ferndale, and to a lot of people that go there, all about Ferndale too, and I'm sorry that I can't make everyone happy, and I understand that, but I think that we do make a lot of people happy that weekend, and I think it's good for Ferndale, so that's why we're doing it, and if we were to have to shut down earlier, honestly, it might not make the event happen, so, which I would be open for that discussion, but I'd like to see how it goes this year. As Chief Collins said, you know, we did talk about some of the problems that happened last year, and I gave him my word that I'll do my best to make sure that some of them absolutely don't happen again, and everything that I can do to make it a good event, and you know, it's a learning process, so, you know, we're still learning, but I think it's a positive thing, so thanks for your consideration.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate it.
And, you know, I guess I would just take issue with one thing Chris said, and that is, you know, he said it's not a popular decision. I think this is the most popular decision that we make all year long, is to approve street fares. Our polling data suggests that this is the single most important thing to people in Ferndale, even above, all due respect, Chief, our police and fire department. It drives, it drives citizen satisfaction with city government, and it is an inconvenience in some ways to everyone in the city. People can't get as, into the libraries easily, they can't, you know, access May the Law Office as easily, but it's something that we all agree as part of a community to live with for a cultural event, for a party, for, you know, in some ways, you know, a chance to see everybody else in the city at the end of the summer, and I think it's a sacrifice that is well worthwhile.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council members, Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item passes. That concludes the regular agenda for this evening. Are there any council liaison reports from council members this evening? Seeing none, I would, we will move to call to council. Police Chief Collins, anything further for the council or residents this evening? All right. Anything from the fire department this evening? Phylline Avely for the chief.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Just briefly, Fire Department did respond Saturday evening to a house fire in the 1500 block of East Chesterfield. Fire was caused by a careless smoker, but they were able to rescue two cats on the fire, so the owner was very pleased. It did substantial damage to the house, which will probably need extensive repairs. You'll probably hear, probably in the newspaper tomorrow, possibly, we did respond to a level two hazmat incident at William Bobbun Hospital today. That was an employee opened an envelope containing some type of white powder there. Hazmat team did not determine any hazard immediate, the powder was collected and is being analyzed at this time, and for evidence. Just a reminder to citizens, fireworks season is upon us, we want to remind everybody that fireworks can be deadly if they're not used properly. Do not allow children access to fireworks, and make sure that they keep a safe distance away when the adults use them. State law has not changed, although there's been a lot of rumors that fireworks, they're gonna legalize a lot of different types of fireworks, such as stuff that goes up in the air and goes bang. State law has not changed, so anything that flies in the air, that has a report, or spins on the ground, is illegal still. We also wanna remind residents that this is the type, the year where, a season where we have a lot of open burning, and open burning is illegal in the city of Ferndale. Be considerate of your neighbors, it's not just a fire hazard problem, it is also a air quality issue for us, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it. Jane Marie, anything to report this evening? All right, thanks. Julie Hall, Recreation Department, and recipient of two checks this evening.
Mayor, council, I just wanna remind everyone that we have our Family Fun Night on Wednesday, July 6, at Martin Road Park. Festivities begin at 6:30, and the movie Despicable Me will begin playing at 8 o'clock, so come out and watch a movie under the stars. And then we also have our family camp out on Saturday, July 16, and bring your tent, and if you wanna try camping for the first time, we're doing it at Martin Road Park, so you're a quick drive home if you decide you don't like it, but we have a fun time, bonfire, campfire songs, our camp staff does all of our family games, excuse me, so it's a good time, so that's July 16, so get online and register, love to have you. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I don't camp even in Martin Road Park.
I see the mayor of our neighboring city, Hazel Park, Jack Lloyd, how are you this evening, sir?
Good afternoon.
Anything?
I'm tied by Ferndale City Pride.
Always great to see you, mayor.
Glad to have you here, very much.
Thanks.
Do you get air conditioning, you don't?
I learned, I learned, learned, learned.
City Clerk, Sherwin Tomlin, anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
All right, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, there's two items. One, since Mayor Lloyd is here, we've had our first meeting to go over the contract with the Michigan Municipal League on the joint Hazel Park-Ferndale fire issue study. I think we approved some changes in the contract, we called some people at the league, Dan's been involved and looked at the agreement, so we hopefully will have that for council probably at the next meeting. We're trying to get them, an actual meeting with the consultant set so we can get underway with that project. During my remaining working life, we want to get it started, so. Second, I do wanna mention to council, the subcommittee has met with the, or discussed the contract with the permanent city manager, April McGrath, she's willing to come on board April 1st. I wanna tell council that...
August 1st.
August 1st, yeah. April in April. That her background check came back wonderful from the in-depth group that the league uses for doing that, we put it in the file, but no reason, next step for take her physical, and she's, and I think she will be here at the next meeting when the actual contract will be on for council's approval. So I guess she gets to sit in the audience one more time.
Two more, right? You have formally two more meetings with us?
Two more meetings in July. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Dan, Chris, city attorney?
I have nothing to say.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Baker, anything this evening?
I have one thing, and I didn't get her last name in my notes, but we had a resident, Carla, that we heard from Ardmore Street, and I wish that she'd stayed, or I hope that maybe she's watching at home, or city manager, if I could ask, since we'll already be contacting her about her sidewalk concerns, if we could perhaps have our Planning and Economic Development Director contact her, or sort of loop into that sidewalk discussion, the discussion about code enforcement, and the reason that I wish she had stayed is that the Planning and Economic Development Director, the police chief, and Judge Longo have been working together to do exactly what she was talking about. They have been working together to not only continually ticket repeat offenders, but take them to court, make this a penalty that hurts in the pocketbook, so that they will actually maintain properties rather than just continually paying small tickets and letting things go. So she would have maybe had some of her questions answered after call the audience, if she'd stayed with us this evening, but I do hope, city manager, that part of that conversation, addressing her concerns about the cement and sidewalk program, can be directing her about how to get some assistance on Ardmore Street with these vine and weed complaints. It sounds like they've got a great program that they're working to implement throughout the city. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
Yeah, I had a question for the city manager. It was under, I was under the understanding that the noise ordinance was going to come to be on council tonight, after the culmination of a year and a half's work, we're close to finishing, and I was just wondering if you can give us the status where that is so that we can close out this issue with revising the ordinance.
Sure. There was a meeting, I think the DDA Board met originally on this, I think last week, maybe it was late the week before, they have some concerns about it, where I guess we're waiting for their final recommend, specific recommendation to council. Dan may wanna comment on this as well, but I think it's ready for council to move forward, and we can clearly put it on the next meeting.
Yes, I would like that to happen.
I'd like to learn more about what you guys have been working on.
Yeah, and also make sure that our consultant is in attendance to that meeting, because it's my understanding that he was not in attendance at the DDA Board meeting, so was unable to answer some of the technical questions that arose during that meeting.
No problem.
Hey, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilman Galloway?
Yes, to the city manager, some time ago, we spoke briefly about the use of the basketball courts at the Kulik Center, and this is sort of a recurring concern of some citizens on Hazelhurst, but, you know, if you could get back to me with whatever your findings were after speaking with Ms. Hall, that would be great, and looking forward to getting more information on Hazel Park and Ferndale working together to provide fire services. I think there's a real opportunity here between the four communities of Hazel Park, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak Township to really have a premier fire service, an ambulance service here on the southeast end of town, and, you know, just have to keep pushing forward on that on all fronts. That's about it.
Thank you. And I guess me, I don't have a lot to say this evening, it is a gorgeous time in our city, get out and ride your bike, walk downtown, and enjoy our wonderful community. Just so you know, we are going to have a special council meeting immediately following this one, for the purposes of going into closed session so that we can discuss labor negotiations and our contract with, fire contract with Pleasant Ridge, just in case you wonder what we're doing immediately following this meeting. And with that, meeting adjourned.
We don't need to make a motion to go into closed session?
No, we have to, because of the way it was done, we have to go into a special session.
Can I?
We can take a break, though, yes. We can take a break.
Couple of quicks.
Yeah, I know. Hey, I...